Mr. Basil, you want to do the vote call, please?
Mr. Basil here. Mrs. Bites?
Here.
Mr. Doughty?
Here.
Mr. Curtis?
Here.
Mrs. Radke?
Here.
Mr. Speed?
Here.
Mrs. Radowski?
Here.
Mr. Wolf?
Here.
Mr. Martino?
Here.
Under announcements, and in fact, let me move up the item five, the procedures for public participation. Prepared statements are to be, that are going to be read to the board. A copy should be presented prior to being read. If you come to the podium, make sure the mic's on. You'll see a little red light at the top. Sign in, say your name and your address, and you'll have three minutes to discuss your item. For those that may not have been here before, if you haven't signed in in the back of the room, please do so. Under agenda edits, we're eliminating item nine D, the food service management company response to the RFP. And there will be a brief executive session in the library behind this after the meeting to discuss negotiation issue and personnel issue. With that, Mrs. Torshen?
Do you want to go first with the law enforcement?
Mr.?
Just wanted to add to the agenda. Gary Road, this is speeding on Gary Road. I just want to add that to the end of the agenda, item D. Under new business, item sixteen D, we've been receiving complaints about Gary Road, students speeding as they leave the high school. So we'll add that to the agenda for discussion purposes.
Do you want to read?
I do.
Yeah, I think we should. You took the message. Absolutely.
I want to thank everyone for coming in honor of the local law enforcement. The state police, as not arrived yet. I'm hoping they still make it. Birdsboro won't be able to. And we have two members, including the chief of the Amity Township Police Department. We decided as a board and administration about two months ago to pass a resolution in honor of local law enforcement and recognition of them. And this is National Police Recognition Week, so we held off on doing this until now. So let me read this, and it was crafted by Mr. Curtis. "The resolution of the Daniel Boone Area Board of School Directors in recognition, thanks, and support of local law enforcement. Whereas the Daniel Boone Area Board of School Directors is the governing body of the Daniel Boone Area School District, comprised of the municipalities of Amity Township, the borough of Birdsboro, and Union Township. Whereas the Amity Township Police Department, the Birdsboro Police Department, and the Pennsylvania State Police serve the Daniel Boone Area School District, our students, staff, and community with professionalism, honor, and distinction. Whereas law enforcement officers routinely and regularly place themselves into harm's way to protect and defend our communities. Whereas the Daniel Boone Area Board of School Directors recognizes the necessity of rule of law and the essential role that local law enforcement plays in the functioning of a just society. It resolved that the Daniel Boone Area Board of School Director hereby expresses its thanks and appreciation to the Amity Township Police Department, the Birdsboro Police Department, and the Pennsylvania State Police for their courageous service protecting our students, staff, and community." And this was agreed to on the 26th of January 2015 by the entire board. So we thank you, we commend you. The negative publicity we see on TV, I'm appalled by. I, we thank you, do one heck of a job, and we appreciate it. So, thank you. For those of you who don't know me, I'm the chief of Amity Township. I'll be retired in my second job in about eight months. But in the last six years, I have a really, do have a really great career in Amity Township. I know you take true good, excellent. True presenters are excellent. You're a man of stature. Birdsboro all series, our, our constant backup to Amity Township. Very frequently, without them, our officers might be relying on one of our own calls when we're busy. Thanks to all sorts of asset growth. But I appreciate this. I thank you all, and behalf of all my officers, it's been a pleasure to serve you. I've been very honored for this chance. Thank you. Thank you. I think you alluded to some of the challenges that are being reported in the media. I think things like this, where the community actually invest heavily in law enforcement, and law enforcement reciprocates that, that investment. Positive relationship between the community and all the police departments that serve this area is kind of the fruit of that teamwork and that coordinated respect and part work. That's what you see. On behalf of the state police, we appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I'd like to thank the municipal representatives that did come to the meeting tonight. We would like to see more of you. Is there any public comment about what just took place? If not, moving on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Martino. We do have a few things to celebrate this evening. And at this time, I would ask Mrs. Rexroad to please come up to the podium. She is going to share with the board and the audience something that transpired at the middle school. It's called Michaela's Voice and the Wheels of Friendship, and the way that our non-disabled peer group worked directly with our disabled peers in creating this Wheels of Friendship. And it's quite something to see. So we just have a very brief video to show you how, if you look over here to the left, how, all the way over, how the friendship wheel was developed. You need to turn that on.
At the middle school, we have a program that is called Connections. And one of the things that they do is they work together with our life skills students. And one of the things that we were fortunate to be involved in this year was to work with Michaela's Voice, which is an organization that works directly with inclusion. And they really champion inclusion in school districts. So with the help of Nikki Haybecker, she has a son named Josh, and he is in a wheelchair. And one of the things behind Michaela's Voice is celebrating inclusion while using a wheelchair in art. And it's called Wheels of Friendship. So we created the painting that's over there. I'll talk about that in a second. But this video is actually up on the Michaela's Voice website. And we filmed this about a month ago. I want to make sure that you're able to hear.
Does the speaker have a dial on it?
Down here, on the.
Ah. Do you know if it's up or down? That's what I was thinking. It seemed already to be up there. Okay. Sorry about that. Might as well start over one more time, so you can hear the whole thing. Wheels of Friendship is a program created by Michaela's Voice to show how you can include everyone in the arts. Kids that have disabilities and kids that don't. Work together to create something beautiful for us. Middle school is an important time in a child's life. Not only are they changing, they're also learning who they are as people. Laura's really good at lots of things, yeah. She's good at bringing people up, and she always makes everyone smile. I work a lot for him on the outside, he's a pilot. But once you really get to know him, he's really up there.
I see him a lot every morning, talking to all his friends, and that's really great to see.
The difference of things within our students is how. Inclusion makes interconnection. It benefits all kids, not just those with complex needs. It creates an environment that is welcoming and warm and friendly. And that's a blessing for everybody.
For some people, making friends is safe. But for others, it's not that.
The problem with YouTube. All right, well, you get the gist. Maybe it'll come back. When you look at the painting, you're going to see that it is a keyboard. It's actually going to be placed in our cafeteria, and it's going to be lengthwise, so that it is actually a long keyboard. What the kids did was they decided on a keyboard because Josh, who is in a wheelchair, loves using his keyboard. And we talked about music as something that brings kids together as well. And then they chose words to represent each one of them, and they placed those words on the keys with their handprints. So when you look at it, you can see that that is, that's basically how that's laid out. So we're going to display that in our cafeteria as soon as we get that back to the middle school and show it off a little bit more. We're going to make sure that it's there. I will send all of you the link to this so that you can actually view it all the way through.
We'll make sure it's on our webpage if it's not already there. But we'll make sure it's there as well.
No, of course, no, it's finished. It's okay.
Scott took us into the dark again. There you go. All right.
Well, that's, that's pretty much it. But I will make sure that you get to see it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Rexroad. Next, I would like to bring some highlights. We'll start with track and field competed at the county championships over the weekend. And the following athletes will be moving on to compete at the District Three championship level Saturday, May 16th, at Shippensburg University. Kira Miller for the 100-meter hurdles. Steph Severs for javelin. Shane Bookwalter for javelin. Jonathan Charles, the 100-meter, 200-meter, and long jump. And Drew Kreski for discus. The softball team defeated Berks Catholic, 1 to 0 on Saturday. They will advance to the semifinals of the Berks County Championship. And they will play tomorrow, Tuesday, May 12th, at 5:00 PM at Lyons Field against Twin Valley. And the baseball team won tonight. They did beat, defeated Muhlenberg in the semifinal round for counties. The score was 10 to 6. And they will move on to the county title game, which will be held Wednesday at 7:00 o'clock, First Energy Stadium. Team to be announced. I'm not sure who they will be playing. So there's some of our highlights in the sports world. Next, I was given information this morning that we have received some Why Not nominations from our production of The Sound of Music. And nominations for Why Not is equivalent, I'm told, to, like the, did they say the, the Tony Awards? That it's like right up there for the Tony Awards. So for most memorable male solo vocal, Ryan Young. Idle wice. Most memorable duet trio quartet, Jake Bergy, Jordan Corey, and Ryan Young. "No Way to Stop It" was what they sang. Most memorable small group, Sophie Gilareto, Rachel Lau, Theo O'Kirsty, Sam Funk, Daniel Schlegel, Anna Schlegel, Kristi Day, and Peyton Fritz, Do Re Mi. And the production number, full ensemble, So Long Farewell. We also had some most memorable lead actress recommendations as well as featured female solo, choreography, chorus, stage crew, and overall production. So these awards will be on, and I apologize because this was put in an email, Wednesday, the 20th of May, at 6:30 PM. So I'll let you know how we make out. And that concludes the superintendent's report. Mr. Martino, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Torshen. Mrs. Bites, the Blazer Foundation?
I would just like to add that that was, that doesn't surprise me in the least because that was a phenomenal production that I did get to see this year. I'm so glad I did. As far as the Blazer foundation update, the spring auction is currently live beginning Sunday, May 17th, at 9:00 PM. The link can be found at the auction.lazerfoundation.org website. Blazer Foundation is happy to report that they have successfully raised the $8,000 necessary for the match for the greenhouse at the middle school. As you may recall, they received the $5,000 grant from Pottstown Hospital and Wellness Grant to get the ball motion, and they were moving. They were challenged to raise $8,000 more to get a match of $8,000. So we understand that the check is in the mail. Literally, at one point, it will be brought to the school board for approval, of course, to be accepted. And then they would like to get the greenhouse ordered and constructed during the summer. The teachers are really lining up, are enthusiastic about it. It was intended to service the FNC family consumer science teachers, but the science teachers are really getting excited about it. So that's a real benefit. And I believe Mr. Hurley is helping spearhead the efforts. Do we have a location? Do we have?
Yeah, it's going to be on the side of the middle school, near where the science rooms are at.
On the side where the science rooms are. Great. So on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank the foundation for their efforts with bringing that to middle school. And I can't wait to see that project now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bites. Mrs. Bites, would you like to find out exactly how much money that the Blazer Foundation has raised since being reconstituted?
Sure.
Share that with the board and the public? I think they've been doing an amazing job. And you hear stories like this. But in the aggregate, I don't think anybody really realizes just how impactful they have been since Stephanie Conover has taken the realm there and really driven this thing forward.
Will do.
Thank you. Any other board comments or questions? Any public comment on the report by Mrs. Torshen, Mrs. Bites?
You don't have to shut it all. Anyway, number five is what I have a comment on. It was on the agenda, but didn't seem to be discussed. Is that, is there some change on there that we're going to vote on next meeting?
I'm sorry, number five?
Number five, yes.
The procedures for public.
Yes. Is there a change on this? Because I never see it on the regular agenda item. Is there going to be a vote on this? Is there a change, changes on this?
No, it's just there as information.
Oh.
It's from the triple zeros, right? Isn't it from the board policies?
Yeah, but I understand.
It's from the voting agenda.
Usually, when, in the voting meeting, there's a blue cover, and it's printed on the cover. And since we don't have a cover for this, we just put it in there.
I didn't see it on the last meeting like this.
So is there a question, Mr. Templeton?
Yeah, is there something to change here that it must be, be able to give your copy after you made the statement, or if you really make the statement?
No, the policy has always been that the copy is supposed to be presented ahead of time.
Okay. And if I come up to the official office here and get copies of the policies or anything?
Could you use the microphone, please?
We'll hit it here. Shut it off a little bit later, so I can talk. If I come up to a high school and get copies of policies or anything, do I get them free?
Policies are all on the web, so they're all online.
All the policies are online, everything's coming in.
But I mean, if I want the unit, if I want a copy from here, would I get it free?
If you want us to make copies for you?
Yes.
No. No, there's a charge for copies.
There's a charge for copies.
There's a charge for copies. And how much does that charge?
It's 25 cents per.
25 cents. And if you want to pay.
You're not letting her finish. It's 25 cents what?
Her page.
Her page. Are you willing to pay 25 cents per page for my copy that I give you on my, what I give you?
Mr. Templeton, if I had to request copies from you, I'll give you 25 cents a copy of the page.
I mean, everybody.
But I haven't asked for Freddie Martin.
You should pay for the copy, copies too.
Mr. Templeton, I don't understand your question.
The problem with having the school district pay for, I mean, our policies and procedures are almost, what? Thousand pages or more. So every time a member of the public came and said, "Give me a copy of your policies and procedures," the school district would be showing out $250 a pop.
Well, still, my time is.
I'm just saying, we've made them available on the website for anybody to see and download it on their own.
But just so you're aware though, if you want a copy of the policy, you should be paying us for our copies as well.
The point, the point of the copies is. The point of the copies is so that they can be entered into the record. Without them, it's very difficult to try and describe what's being said into the record.
And there's always the ability, if somebody wants to email them to Mrs. Kramer, or the secretary, or ahead of time, we can print it out for them, and you and I met the class.
Anyway, I.
I want to take a moment to introduce myself. I am Nikki Cavan. I'm working with Mrs. Rexroad on Wheels of Friendship. Unfortunately, you didn't get to see the course of the six weeks that it transpired, or where it started with Mr. Hurley in sixth grade. I am very proud of that. I am a parent, first and foremost. I've had three kids come through the district, one of which is Joshua, who has utilized a wheelchair. I truly believe in inclusion. And I am very proud to stand in front of you tonight with the Michaela's Voice and the Wheels of Friendship mural that you see and the video that you will get. Thank you to Mrs. Rexroad. Thank you to Shelley Mikowski. Thank you to Mrs. Koshka. And thank you, board. We have been here for 18 to 19 years in this district. We have seen several superintendents. We've gone through the course. To me, it's still about my children and the children that my children go to school with. And I love very much. I'm very proud of that. Second, I'm an inclusion consultant, and I work with Include Me through the RFPA. We are sponsored by the Bureau of Special Education. We're sponsored by the Early Intervention Technical Assistance. I've been with this group for five years. I'm very proud of our efforts of inclusion, starting at preschool with the Berks County Intermediate Unit. I've made a huge impact here, I believe, as my kids have, and so have the people that I mentioned. I'm very proud of that. So I want tonight, just to take a moment to say that to me, it's about loving my kids. And each kid is a gift. Each child is a gift and has a gift. And as a district, I hope that we will embrace that and celebrate that, and remember that as you sit here on the board, as you sit here in the audience, and as you're out amongst our community. It really takes all of us working together to make that difference for our kids. I'm not for higher taxes either. We pay a lot in taxes. A lot. But at the same time, you know, it is really, really important. So I am very proud. I hope, unfortunately, that that link did not come through tonight. But I hope that you will take the time to watch that. And thank Mrs. Torshen. She was a principal. We started with Mrs. Hefter, with Colton as a teacher and then a principal, and coming through the district. I'm very, very invested here. And tonight is very rewarding for me as a parent and second, as a professional. Because without that challenge, I probably wouldn't have opened that door. So thank you very much, and thank you again for embracing it.
Thank you. Moving on to curriculum, Mr. Curtis? I'm going to turn this presentation over to Mr. Doughty. I had a conflict for that meeting, and Mr. Doughty presided very carefully in my absence.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. In the curriculum committee meeting we had in April, I believe it was April 24th, we had presentations about the classroom sizes, staffing for the high school, middle school. And we received recommendations from the principals there about what they would prefer, and how they could shift things around and move them. I think we all received those presentations. So we didn't really come to any conclusion at this point from the curriculum side of things. So I think there's still some debate. It hasn't happened there, and reconcile that with the findings. Also, we talked about online classes and being able to offer them to our students as well. So, and then I know that one of the issues was that we couldn't, couldn't offer any courses online that we had previously offered as an in-class or written-worded class, so to speak. So that was one of the issues.
Thank you, Mr. Doughty. And I note the next meeting is May 18th?
Yes.
Any questions from the board or comments? Public comments or questions?
I, Steve Miller at 600 Rich Track. I have a quick question for you. You said that you couldn't offer online classes for classes that were already presented for the board. If you could explain more.
Sure. So, so classes that were already offered within the district, there's a limitation, basically, that says that we can't offer that as an online course. So we couldn't cut it from the curriculum, you know, in-house. I'm not sure what.
You're talking cutting it instead of offering it in the district.
Really, union, to contract the application. Thank you.
I don't know. Get ready for our board.
Oh, sorry. She's got to warm up.
Moving on to building and grounds, Mr. Radowski, did you want to?
Thank you, Mrs. Martino. I, I seem always being bearer of bad news on my report. So, sorry.
That's why Mr. Curtis wondered if you could jump in.
Facilities for the event on May 4th. And we had quite a lot to do, and then I lost the minutes. But I'll just stick to the recommendations at this point. We are gathering more information, or I should say, staff is gathering more information on some of the elements. But the six or seven things that you see in front of you here did come out as recommendations from the finance committee. And they would like to be done this summer once the list out, so that everything's in place for the fall. The first one was the approval of middle school sidewalk repairs. There's some areas that are breaking up, that are crumbling. Safety hazard, and obviously, if you don't repair it, it's only going to get worse. But it is, it is an issue of safety as well. The cost for that was not exceed $71.08. With approval of, we're recommending approval of replacing the high school cooling tower by Tri-State. by Tri-State HBAC. It is a cost SARS price and that's not exceed the 29,576. Cafeteria lighting in AC, they're looking at replacing that with LED lights. The, there's approximately 20 fixtures, most of them would have to be rebuilt, they're not working at all. So the cost that you see here is for the fixtures themselves and the rate of return, or the return on investment is approximately five years between energy savings, maintenance, and the tax. Berksboro Elmond Cafeteria, the doors, the lighting doors need replaced, again, that is a cost SARS quote. The Turf Track and Court LLC contract, that's actually something, this is a different, I don't know if it's a different vendor. I believe the vendor's the same, but we're going directly with them instead of through a third party. So not only was their price cheaper than what we've been paying in the past, we agreed to sign a three-year service contract, it's approximately 10% discount from what it would be if we just paid here. It's something we have to do every year, so it made sense to the board or the committee to actually sign that three-year service contract to get a 10% discount. The last item might actually be a positive, but we had spoken a few months ago about Celtic Spears Martial Arts, they would like to use the gymnasium here to offer martial arts lessons and they did get zoning approval through the township for these. We would not have to improve the driveway at this time and they're looking to use the building Monday and Wednesday nights currently for approximately two and a half to three hours. And our current facility's use policy really is a one-time use fee and it would cost them, I think, thousands of dollars a month if we utilize that policy. So the committee looked at if they're renting it for a session or a season or a year round, what would, what would a fair rate be to charge them? And we looked at $75 a night and Casey felt that that would certainly cover the cost of the lighting and that kind of thing. And I believe what we talked about is we can set the door to be open for a certain period of time for them to get in and then it would re-lock. So those were the items that we were looking at and I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that you might have or ask for help if you have ones like we need to.
Hey, two quick questions. If I'm not mistaken, I was adding something to my head, it approaches like $60,000 for these repairs?
Yes. Mrs. Small, I said that we have money in the budget for repairs and if the, I think it was we discussed if the cooling tower cost wasn't in, how we could hold off until the next budget cycle, but if the money's there, may it make sense to spend it from this year's budget.
And if we ran out part of, or ran out the part of the building to anyone, how do we secure the rest of the building?
Well, we did talk about that because we all currently have gates in this building. We talked about the potential to install a video camera. The, what we currently talked about was trying this without really securing the building other than all the doors being locked. They are looking at small room, they don't let people wander, they're all like, you know, kids are suspended, they have a bathroom, an adult's force them. I'm pretty much kind of saying on a trial that we're, we're working on trusting, you know, if we find issues or we find that things are moving around or people are relationship, then we'll have to either secure the building and you would either look at recouping that cost from them or just tell them they can't use it.
I just think it's something the facilities committee needs to look at going forward in case you start doing the same thing for multiple organizations.
Well, and we did, and we did take some of those ideas around. The cost for those at this point, it would be, it would be an upfront cost that maybe we recoup over five, 10 years, but it's not something that we would, you know, break even on in the beginning. So we kind of looked at the potential for moving, we're sort of with an honor system in this case, so went out to look at each case individually.
Other comments or questions?
Oh yeah, just got a quick question. AC with the cafeteria lights, have you guys reached out to the energy company to see if there's any rebates that come along with that as well?
It's, it's all in there already.
The rebates are too?
Yeah, the Act 129 rebate is, is in there and that's right from Med Ed.
Med Ed, okay.
And actually, I just received the approval today that our application was approved. So it's, it's actually, and I forwarded off to Mr. Small and Mr. Miller's head for their minds.
Thanks. What's our, on that quality that has down with the energy savings based on 10 cents a kilowatt hour, what's our, what do we charge a kilowatt hour?
What are we paying per kilowatt hour? I don't know about having to check, check the bills. We receive, we received, the initial credit that they offer is a 5 cent per kilowatt hour upfront for any energy savings. They've, they've extended that and given incentives if you have the projects completed by August 12th. So the intent is to have the fixtures here and pretty much if they after school closes, we're going to be in that cafeteria to have it done because we have to verify with Med Ed, excuse me, that the job is complete by the 12th. Because that's when their big energy crunch hits with the heat, so that they want everybody trying to save as much energy by that as possible.
Then along the, the turf contract, this is, I'm actually surprised that Mr. Basil didn't access this, this is rather out there. So it says termination of services. It says if we terminate, if we then terminate, they'll be paid a reasonable termination expenses. What, what is reasonable termination expenses?
To balance the contract, I would expect.
And this is kind of a nebulous termination thing, so I'm just curious if we should get that, go down a little more.
Yeah.
And then my, my final item was for the, for the running out of the gym, so did, so I know we, we talked about covering the costs, but what it actually generates a revenue? Because I don't think that's where we have to talk so far today.
I think honestly it would because realistically, you're looking at lights for two and a half hours. When you, when you guys kind of came up with that figure, did you...
What was the question?
Are we actually making money or are we just breaking even? I would think we would be because I, I can't imagine the electric's going to be $75 for the...
Yeah, I mean, I just want to know, I, I think it's, you know, obviously like, like Mr. Basil said, we have, we have fixed infrastructure here so that where we utilize it better, so obviously we may make some money. You know, it's a nice place for the, to have a community there, but I'm sure these guys are a for-profit company, right?
Yes, they are, and, and I mean, I think it's something that we could relook at at some point too, but they're already starting out, I don't know what they're, they're just sort of, so, I mean, if you make it too high, they're, they're not going to be here anyway. But I think they're looking, then hopefully maybe somewhere they could grow is maybe they could use it more often. So I think there is a potential for more revenue, but...
Yeah, I mean, that's something that I think the facilities committee should maybe get a more better, better handle on for, for future so that we know, that we, that we can actually set a rate that, that confidence and you know, forward that way.
And we did discuss that, you know, because we, it's also going through the policy committee, I believe, as well right now. And if we set this, as I kind of said earlier, and I think we looked at it, that we can set a pace like, like pace phases and so we have the policy.
What are the hours? You mentioned two and a half to three hours, what are the hours that'll be in the...
I think it was like 5:30 to 8:00. I don't have that with me, I apologize.
So it is, you know, time we're going to be heating the building in the winter that we normally would have been turning down the thermostats by then, right?
Well, I try to look at Monday nights, we're here anyway, at least two or three nights out of the month, so...
That's true.
So you would be, yes, you would have a heavy cost, something like this.
And did you toss around numbers for gates? What are we talking, tens of thousands to gate off the, what, four areas? Or did you just not look into it?
We didn't look at gate, we didn't look at firm numbers for the gates yet. We did talk about security cameras, I think we were looking at three or four thousand dollars to put cameras in. We also talked about if you had, if the building had an alarm system, if you could have, you know, motion plate sensors.
So are gates something that we wouldn't consider?
No, I don't think it's that we wouldn't, it was just, I, I think for right now, and I think it's something we can investigate, but I don't, we weren't looking to do that before making any decisions on the cost. I don't think it's something that we can say, that you could reasonably say to one group, well, you need to cover this cost. I think if you're going to do it, you need to do it for the fact that you're using it for the hour.
Yeah, I am doing it about the precedence now, whether people want to use the gyms in the other buildings, we're sort of locked into this now and I'm not sure that we've really, we're, we're giving it out at $25 an hour, basically.
I don't think we are because I think, I think it's an agree, we would have an agreement with them, same with the range soccer club, and be specific to that group or including it for that group. And I think you'd have to look at each group that wants to...
In policy, we are trying to get more universal in that though, people are using gyms, you know, in their outside organizations, that is, you know, we're trying to standardize. A question about the lighting contract? There's 16 250 watt Mo halide lane type fixtures at this location presently, so this is to replace all of them?
Yes, and the reason being is because A, I think at least half of them are out, B, when they're replacing, they have to run a...
Lesher.
A lid, so it would make sense to change them all. The regular bulbs that we have burn out much more quicker than the LED, I mean, the LEDs, they may not have to change them for 10 years, whereas the other ones, so if they rented the equipment, it would just do more...
Yeah, they actually do that with the highway lights too, when they get those big cranes out, they just do them whether they need them or not, so I understand that, the genesis of that, then, thank you. And then one more question, on the chart, location material cost later, the last column says mercury vaporated life in hours, is that some sort of comparison or are we introducing mercury into the building?
No, that's, that's just a comparison for the light expectancy of the old bulbs compared to the life expectancy of the new ones.
Right, okay, so the LED, let's be clear, there is no mercury involved in these new, this new lighting system. Great, thank you.
The guarantee for them is 50,000 hours is the warranty on the package.
Thank you.
The facilities request for the gym here in this building was two nights a week, 5:30 to 8:30 through the 31st of December this year, so at that point, if we give out a...
Going back to Mr. Ratkett's concern on there, I don't know if we ever really knew the inclusion, that's the direction we'd like to move. Can we get a contract with a specific number or something less nebulous than a reasonable amount for the next meeting or whenever we're going to approve this?
I, I would direct...
That was one key, that was one year ago.
Yeah, Field Turf is who made, who installed our turf, that's who makes the turf. Turf Track and Court used to be their subcontractor. Field Turf has found a cheaper vendor from out of state to come in to do the job. Field Turf's price to me was $2,900. Turf Track and Court was $2,500. I asked them is there a savings for a three-year agreement? They said yes, so they came back with a three-year agreement and they reduced the first year and therefore only gave us a 3% increase every year after that. They are, they are who has done the work for, they have been the school district for Field Turf since the turf has been installed. So they're already, they, they know the wear areas, that they already have the history.
Casey, we're on, especially now the question is, did we terminate? It says reasonable cost.
I think what you would do is... And I can reach out to them and find out what that, what else they...
That's the new open-ended.
I think a reasonable cost would be, you know, if it's termination without cause, right, that's the first one. And then reasonable cost would be whatever the, the single year contract rate would been, that's what they'd be reimbursed for. So if it's $2,500 versus $2,100, go back and credit them with $400 bucks and call it a day, move forward.
We're talking thousands of dollars here. Part of the contract.
But honestly, you want to have, you don't want to have the ability to terminate with cause or performance or some other issue without penalty.
Casey, if you could, I mean, see if you could get a number.
Yeah, I will, I'll email them tomorrow.
Thank you. Any public comments on building and grounds?
Here's a set of our handcuffs into this turf. Why don't you just rip it out, put the regular brass back for God's sakes? Really is, we are going to be spending a lot of money costly on this crap. Really is, I mean, that's all it is, straight.
Mrs. Hamel. Hello, Monja Hamel, by the way, Monroe Street, Berksboro. I have a couple of questions. One was about the turf, how, how old is the turf now?
It's about seven years.
Seven years, and I recall it was supposed to be maybe replaced in 10, so is that still the number that it would be replaced?
They were talking about a facility through about 15.
They're looking like 12 to 15 depending on the use right now.
Okay, so then the three years would be like a normal timeframe that we would probably keep that company. The other one with the gymnastics, I was wondering if we do set this as a precedence to have people come in and use our facility? Do you have them have a, do they have liability insurance for themselves so they're completely covered and the school's not liable for injury? And will the kids sign a waiver, the participants sign a waiver so that we are totally off the hook with their parents? And, and just that they have liability, because gymnastics is a lot, they do get injured on gymnastics?
I think it was actually like a tycoon bill, but I mean, still, but yes, they, they do have liability insurance and I believe they do sign waivers, we certainly have that as a stipulation.
And so if we move forward with that, I would like to make sure every group does exactly the same thing, sign the waiver to have their liability. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And our next meeting is due first at 6:00.
Thank you, Mr. Dasky. Moving on to item nine, finance. Who's going to make the preliminary budget presentation, Mr. Small?
Okay, I place before you tonight, the copy sent electronically is the actual PDE 2028 format of the preliminary budget for 1516. Just, this is what's discussed in finance committee meeting on the 30th, moving forward. Just some notes that I included with that. On the revenue side, your local real estate mileage remains at 28.9618 mils. Aside from that, on the revenue side, just the normal revenue items generated by various taxes, the local taxes. On the state revenue side, as I stated before, with all the, the controversy that's going on in Harrisburg right now with the governor's budget, all of the state revenue is flatlined as far as basic ed and special ed, despite of the fact that the governor's budget drove out about 740,000 additional revenue. That is, is obviously still under debate, so we have included nothing in this preliminary budget. As we move along, as we find out things, we certainly have them in when it becomes certain. I also made adjustment in the transportation subsidy, just based on the activity and the way that your transportation subsidy, subsidy is driven out the year after the transportation is provided, so for next year, it's based on this year's service and just looking at the history a little bit, I, I did reduce that a little bit. In addition, your debt service subsidy is reduced because of the refinancing. You're paying less, therefore you're receiving less. And also, moving forward, keep in mind that your highest, your bond issues that are producing the most reimbursement are being paid down, so there will be a drop in the next few years in your revenue subsidy or your debt service subsidy. in your revenue subsidy or your debt service subsidy. On the federal side, as of last Thursday, we did receive allocations for Title I, Title II next year. The largest impact was in the Title I area, which is a reduction of approximately $29,000 at this point, which was a little surprising, because there has been some talk that some of the negative impact that you realized about four years ago, I think it was with sequestration, that some of that was going to be recovered, but at this point, not the case. So, I did reflect the reduction of $29,000 in the Title I allocation area. Title II was also impacted, but not in any great degree. The other piece that I did pull out of the state side, and I had mentioned this at the finance committee meeting, is the ready-to-learn grant, because consensus is that is being removed from the state budget this year, being replaced by a portion of accountability block grant that got removed back in 1011. But, once again, a lot of controversy, but I said they removed the revenue side and the expense side, and in such time as we know for sure what is coming forward with your replacement funding through block grant. The consensus, once again, is it's going to be part of your basic ed subsidy, it's not going to be a separate grant from before. So, I did adjust that as well. That pretty much summarizes the state side. And on the expenditure side, as a result of the discussion at the finance committee meeting and meetings in the past, as it relates to staff reductions, related to enrollment reduction, and aligning class sizes to your administrative guidelines, this budget does reflect a reduction of 11 positions, three of them being retirees. That's pretty much on the, on the expenditure side, and is the largest impact, that and the related benefits, of course. Moving from the actual budget document, I also, as a result of the finance committee meeting, I distributed two copies of the five-year plan we've been working on during the course of the year. And in that discussion on the 30th, we discussed the, we have had in the, in the five-year plan for some time now, the potential closure in the 1718 year, but we also discussed the potential of moving it up one year to the 1617 year. So, what we have, there are two different scenarios. One with closure 1617, and the other for the 1718 year. And, of course, the 1516 year reflects what is in the preliminary budget at that. Answer any questions?
Yes, Mr. Small. If you could just verbally explain the benefits and the drawbacks financially and the fiscal help of closing the building in 1617 versus 1718.
Well, the obvious, if you reduce your salaries in one of the early years, it's going to have an impact going out the next two years in this plan. You're looking at, at PISR's contribution in the 1617 year of 29.27, so it weighted, it impacted fund balance moving forward. When you get to the 1718 year, that's when PISR begins the flatline, well, actually, the 1617 year. 1617 PISR is at 29.27, and that's up 4% over the 1516 year. Then you get to the 1718 year, it only moves up by, by 1%, to 30.25, and then the next year is only 31.28. So, you're, you're grabbing the savings there that first year, which produce an impact to your fund balance.
Mr. Small, you have it in the budget, the potential to move it up a year, but that's still going to be based on the actual declining enrollment, whether that triggers it or not.
That's why I have the word "potential."
Right.
Based on everything that happens between now and then, the plan we had discussed back in, in March, the idea of getting a plan in place and developing a trigger, if certain things happen, we're prepared, and I believe in crisis mode. So, I just put this in front of you this way, so that you have an idea of the impact that it can have.
I just want to thank your office for the manner in which you put this together, because in the past years, certainly on this board, you're watching previous boards do this budget process, it was not nearly as smooth or as number-centric, it seems, as it's been this year. So, thank you for the years that you guys have done.
It's, it's a work in progress, it's very fluid, and, just like I said last Thursday, when we received the information on federal allocations, you have the capability to plug it in and see the impact.
And before the public jumps up and asks, this is still preliminary, you won't vote finally, it isn't until June, correct?
Well, you're going to vote a week from tonight on the preliminary, and there's a 30-day window for public review, and then the 22nd of June, I believe, is the business session of the gym. You will vote on your final. And, and I'm sure that'll be, when you make your approvals, it's going to be sometime before Harrisburg has a budget.
And just as a footnote, one of the things that we discussed in the finance committee is regards to some of these assumptions and the five-year numbers that you guys are looking at in front of you, I believe we also shared those spreadsheets from the finance committee meeting at the end of April as well. The, one of the things that we're looking at and trying to accomplish also is to reach out to the Pennsylvania Economy League. It's a group that works with school districts to help them assess enrollments and building capacity, so things in those areas that we're trying to address on our own. The finance committee felt that it was probably a good idea, these people have a lot of expertise in this area, they've been doing it for decades, working with dozens and dozens of school districts, to bring their own models and formulas to the table to make these determinations. And we thought it'd also be helpful to have a third party come in to do that, as opposed to try to wrestle it with ourselves. Now, I reached out to the Pennsylvania Economy League, I spoke to Susan Baker there regarding the, there's basically two separate forces or projects that take place. One is an enrollment study, the other one's a building utilization study. The first, which is the enrollment study, would take, let's see, they come in, if the board approved it sometime in June, and begin working on gathering the information that they need. They wait until they got the October enrollment numbers before completing their study, and then, from there, produce a report before year-end for the board's consideration to look at. The cost of this is probably around $15,000 to get done. The, the other piece of it, which is the building utilization study, I've been playing phone tag with the lead consultant architect, his name is Jim Thompson, and so we have not been able to connect as of yet, and set up a date or time, or get additional information to share with the board at this time. As soon as I have that, I'll email it to everybody. One of the things that we're trying to work on that we will do after this meeting is, the finance committee wanted to bring in Susan Baker from this corporation to discuss with the board what they do, take, have basically a Q and A of the processes they put in place, and what assumptions they use to do their modeling. And we're trying to coordinate the time when their schedules and our schedules will match. So, after this meeting, let's get on the finance committee, and we'll try to pick a couple of dates that work best over the next three or four weeks, that I can get back to them with, that we can all get together for a meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Are there any other questions from the board, or public, or Mr. Small?
Actually, Mr. Martin, I think that's, actually, I'm actually Mr. Curse a little bit here. Since I'm, I think I'm the only member that's both on the finance committee, as well as the curriculum committees, I can see both sides. So, at the next week's meeting, do we intend to actually maybe formalize a curriculum recommendation as far as staffing levels?
I don't know how we would determine that. What are you looking at specifically?
Well, I guess so, the recommendations from the finance committee was two cuts to high school, one to middle school, and eight at the elementary level, is that correct? Five plus three retirees, eight total, eight total positions, correct? So, my concern with, with the high school, Mr. Mike's presentation was that, you know, I know we have the issue of the, let's try to this as the classes that had less than 10, 10 individuals. And, you know, I know Mr. McNight will, if two cuts are done, that'll happen. I'm just concerned that we're kind of taking his vision of what high school could be and kind of putting to the bastion before he's even kind of seen under him. And, you know, he did, he did say that we, as a board, need to decide what our vision of high school will be, whether it's generalist as it is now, whether we want to specialize, which is a decision that is not going to be made a week, because we need to come together as a board to figure that out. And that, that could turn an impact where we can cut. And maybe that's bringing, maybe we do bring in some of these online classes that we could flesh out some, some ways with. So, that's number one. Number two, the middle school, I know we did have four cuts passed here?
Yes.
And while, you know, Ms. Wexler did, did offer the ability to cut one, but still keep our teams in sixth grade, she did point out that there's been some pickups with seven and eight are not sharing teams, there's been some issues there that they've been working on. We also don't know exactly where the, how the middle school is going to flesh out as far as, we don't want to top those schools in the state, with all those cranes that they're maintaining, if not. So, I'm curious to see how that fleshes out. And then, you know, I guess my concern there is we, if we're cutting eight, we will have some classes probably topping out 26, 27 kids. So, you know, what I would recommend, my suggestion is that board members, especially on curriculum, maybe take a tour of Amity, I believe that Amity does have one class that has 25 in it right now, to see how that class functions, and to see if it actually makes sense to get 27 kids into one of our classes.
Okay, but in terms of actually issuing a recommendation to the full board, what would be the effect of a discussion in curriculum committee yield? Like, I'm asking, I guess, what's the end goal of?
The end goal, does, does the recommendation from the finance committee, you know, does that actually sync up with our curriculum?
Or something, okay, whether we can handle that or not, essentially. Does that activate the way that I'm training them, whether we can absorb the cuts?
If we absorb the cuts, whether that's where, whether that's going to impact what we do in, from the future, though?
All right, I think we, we can do that. I'd like to have perhaps Mrs. Torche, and Mr. Small, extend that curriculum meeting if possible. In terms of recommendation, I don't think it would fit forward to have dual recommendations, but if we're looking into the effects of these changes on the curriculum, that's certainly something we can investigate, but at the end of the day, it's going to be up to the full board to determine whether or not.
Oh, sure. Absolutely, it's up to the full board, but as, you know, a board member, I think you want to have as much information on that as possible, make the informed decision. And I certainly think that there's, there's, you know, since we're not, we're not expanding at all kindergarten anyway, there's certainly a custom to be made, I'm just not sure that it would take.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Bayzalone, sorry. Mr. Bayzalone, question. When we're doing this modeling of when the trigger would, would happen towards possibly closing a school, are we going to first have the opportunity as a board to look at what the class size would be, and then have that as the model to fit into the school? Or are we going to look at it from the reverse and say, well, we're going to close the school, so this is going to be the class size?
I guess that's the chicken and the egg question.
Well, it's a philosophical question.
Well, and I think it's up to the board to decide, that's, I'm not driving it one way or the other. This, this particular company, what they do is they basically take a look at what it comes to building utilization first and foremost. So, they're going to take a look at the buildings, the plans, they're going to take a look at how they're currently used, and they're going to be looking for impact, input from us in terms of, I imagine, class size, they're going to be taking a look at our policies and procedures, they're going to be taking a look at, you know, where we have computer labs, or how we break out into these separate rooms for IEPs and special ed needs. So, I think they take a comprehensive look to all those things, and they're looking for feedback from the board on what it is that we're looking for, and then they'll adjust their model accordingly. Again, I hadn't had a direct conversation with the architect, it's been with the other side of the coin, which is the enrollment studies.
So, this could actually dovetail into the discussion of whether we move a different other grade into the middle school? Is that?
I think we could have that complete, I think, what I'd like to get out of this is, getting back to your original question, which is, okay, we see the number on the plans, which says each of these buildings house X number of students. And so, the question is, is that how we use the building? Is there a more efficient way of utilizing our building than we currently do? That, that question hasn't been posed. I mean, I think everybody just assumes that we are using our buildings efficiently. Maybe we're not, I don't know what the answer to that is, and maybe these people can help us make that determination. And at the end of the day, once we have a better understanding of which each building capacity, actual capacity is, we could also, part and parcel of that, have a discussion that we hadn't been having, is in light of declining enrollment, how would you use these, these physical assets to best complement the curriculum that you want to offer? Is that a five through eight middle school? Is it seven and eight as part of some other separate program, or moving eight and up? I mean, we've heard of lots of different ideas that are out there, and I think that they could probably give us a couple of different scenarios. If you do this model, this is how you use the building. If you do this particular curriculum model, this is how you use the buildings. And it's up to us to decide which way we're going to go from, from a curriculum perspective. But they model this stuff both ways, for declining enrollments, and utilization of buildings, and, and growing school districts, and, and utilization of buildings, and, and building new facilities altogether. So, we're going to learn a lot from them, I suppose.
Mr. Wolf, if I may, the question I heard you ask was, will closing a building drive class sizes? And, and I'm part of the finance committee, but the answer in my mind is no, because we have not talked about increasing class sizes. So, if we were to close a building, it doesn't mean class sizes are going to jump to 28, 30, 32, or anything like that. And right now, the policy has recommended class sizes.
For the, the early grades?
We haven't, we haven't really said we're going to increase the higher grades either.
And I'm not saying that anyone has said, I'm just, you know, the perception is, that's what it means. And the perception, you know, the perception in the community is, if we close a school, that's how we're willing to do it. And I'm not saying it's right or wrong, I'm just saying that that's a perception, and sometimes perception is often reality, and it should be something you just have to be aware of and discuss.
Yeah, what we discussed, though, is how what we have would fit.
Oh, clearly.
So, I mean, that, anything contrary to that hasn't really been discussed.
I think Mr. Wolf makes a good point, though. I mean, there's been no discussion whatsoever in any format about increasing, increasing class sizes. We haven't, that's a policy decision, and we haven't discussed policy at all. All we've discussed is what are our physical capabilities in terms of the plans that we have, and what do our policies allow, and what kind of curriculum are we looking to use moving forward in the face of declining enrollment? And that's basically been the nutshell discussion, operating within the constraints that we have, not expanding those constraints to say that, you know, class sizes are going to go up, and therefore, we can use a different policy to change our physical use.
Okay, that kind of segues into my next thought that I just remembered. About a month or two ago, I had asked if we had reversed engineered our modeling for what we anticipate the kindergarters coming in, what, you know, where our enrollment is going, and coming into the future by applying it to the past and seeing, you know, does it work, and is it closed? What's the delta between what that model showed and what we actually saw?
I'm going to, I'm going to let Mr. Small field that one, that came up again, and it was something that he was working on, trying to tackle as well, so.
At the next finance committee meeting, we're going to have that ready. We did produce an initial response, it wasn't exactly what you had.
We did produce an initial response that wasn't exactly what you asked for, but we have a preliminary draft in place right now. But at the next finance committee meeting, we will be coming forward with that reverse step.
Thank you.
Any public comment?
I have a question. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Mr. Small, you mentioned the debt service subsidy deduction due to refinances. Did you calculate that into our savings when you, when they were estimated for the refinancing company?
Yes, that, the numbers in the expense column here of the reduction is the actual expense side. But if that was discussed at the time, that you're paying less, therefore your subsidy is much like.
The whole category is that? What number is that? So.
The subsidy portion is under the state revenue debt service subsidy, just under transportation subsidy. And the savings on the actual payment is under expenditures under the nine hundred debt service. And then I put in parentheses, the three years that the refinance impacted the actual savings on payment.
Thank you. And then one other question. Is there some way that we can illustrate for the district what we do get for our fifty-three million dollar budget? This is, you know, a budget and has the categories, but is there some way to illustrate what programs we will be providing in this budget?
When you say programs?
I understand there's some sort of service that can provide an overview, a marketing study, what's that called again? Have you ever talked about it previously?
Right. I think you're referring to the National Business Managers Organization have their, what they call their meritorious budget report, which is a marketing tool and goes into a great deal of detail with graphs and charts. And that is something that we're working toward. It usually takes at least one to two years to build a foundation with them. There's a, I don't want to describe this. They don't anticipate your official submission until after a couple of years of trial run because it is really sophisticated. But it is a marketing tool that can be used for the community, real estate brokers, any number of organizations to market your district.
So you're saying we wouldn't even pursue that until we had two good budgets, like, you know, create the foundation for that?
I don't have a problem moving forward here in the next year of laying the groundwork and applying for the process for the program.
Okay.
But it is, it is to ask both the National Business Managers Organization, it's called the meritorious budget report.
Thank you.
I would just add after that, PCIU has meritorious budgets. I think they call it their, it's in their annual report, and they bring it down to the number of students and families affected by each program. It's very interesting to see some of the effects. I think there's over two-hundred-and-fifty thousand people who are subject directly affected by PCIU programs. So it's very interesting from that perspective. It's a pleasure to see that we're considering doing that because it really lets the community know what they're getting for their tax dollars.
I'm sorry, Mr. McKnight, I actually forgot one thing. I also asked if you're small, you know, board members might, might see that. You'll see, if you recall, folks who recall when Mr. Solomon was here, part of his proposal back then where he had, you know, his recommendation was to have smaller tax increases each year to the future to balance the budget with PES increases and all that. So you'll see on the second page that there are, he did put the Act One piece in there as far as, you know, how much we can raise taxes, what it bills worth. And, you know, just the point was that at some point you will see that taxes aren't raised at some point, we're going to have a cliff where we won't be able to raise taxes enough to offset the future deficits. But of course, we don't know what the state's going to be getting us. We don't know if the state will ever act on pension reform. But, you know, the assumptions that are currently in place, that at some point we, in the near future, we won't be able to raise taxes enough to compensate for that deficit.
Okay.
I have a question.
There was, there was a question passed today. This isn't approved yet, but we've discussed it publicly. Is there any objection to this being placed online?
Those scenarios?
Yes.
Could I do?
Say as long as it's labeled as.
You're referring to the preliminary budget document or the five-year plan?
Or both?
Both five-year plans.
Put it all on.
That's fine. Like I said earlier, it is very fluid. It changes daily. So I put it up today, next week it'll change.
I think this needs to be indicated as a grant.
Yeah, I was going to say, we'll put it on there to make sure it's like a.
Big ink mark across that makes it draft.
Watermark.
Okay. Is there any public comment on anything involving finance?
I just want copies of these. I didn't get them.
No?
No. These are Mr. Torche's. I need them from him so I can watermark it. I need them from Mr. Small so I can watermark it.
You got it. It's on. Okay. Oh. All right. Just a comment. Actually, I have two questions. You just answered one.
Mr. Small, David, name and address, please.
Oh, David Poole, four-four-three Hill Road, Public Road. Just a comment first. I just want to endorse the comment that Mr. Kurtz made relative to Mr. Small. It is so great, I think you call it a number-centric budget and one that really we're going to be able to take a look at as a public and see what's, what's out there. Appreciate that very much. It's a breath of appreciation. Second, can the board give us any idea of occurrence status of contract negotiations? The elephant in the room, you know, this has been the salary benefits that are a result from the contract that you're currently negotiating. Is there any, any information you could share relative to contract negotiations? Negotiations have started. There have been two meetings that I'm aware of so far. The first meeting, the DBA presented a proposal to the negotiating committee. And the second meeting, the negotiating committee presented to the DBA the district's proposal. Has the board formulated essentially what the proposal will be? Do you have, you have any information that you could share? Yeah, well, the whole, the whole proposal will probably be online before too long. But in the meantime, until that, I will say that our proposal is basically that the line be held on salary and benefits so that costs are not increased. Certainly going forward, you know, as we said, we're going to, we're going to hit a cliff and, you know, like the, the shorter the fall, I guess, the better on that score. So would you say it will be online? Yes, but if you look at the, at the five-year plan? I don't have a five-year plan. Well, this will be online. Okay, great. And when you look at it, you'll see there's no increase in salary and benefits across the board. All right. Thank you for answering my question.
Thank you. Why wouldn't we just publish the two offers?
Oh, we, we can. We just haven't discussed it amongst ourselves yet.
Okay. Just throwing it out there for the board to consider, why not? Everybody's playing for full transparency and disclosure around here. And the contract is sixty-seven percent of our budget. Why wouldn't we just put the proposals on the table for the, for the public to see sooner or later, and we have to see what the end result is before anything's approved?
Now, Mr. Rathkev and I attended a, a session on negotiations presented by PSBA, and they said that it's fully acceptable to put it online. It's just we have another chance to discuss it with the rest of you.
Well, I'm there for beta money. I know we're getting caught into faceless business class, grass, I'm in it for one, but now we're going to throw fifteen thousand dollars away again. We have resources right here with to do that. Mr. Small practically told us everything. At the finance committee, the dollars, it's cost, each one of these buildings, it stays day open and stay running. I'm sure our building ground supervisor, Mr. Kenny's here, he's up and running by now. He tells us the strength and the weaknesses of every one of his buildings. And we're all unknown to enrollment and how to study it. But we're going to spend fifteen, and by the way, that increase, I believe, was twelve thousand dollars when it was first introduced. Last Thursday, that was fifteen thousand dollars. So we have an open, open wallet, don't we? We can spend for everything. Fifteen thousand dollars could be done in halves. Why, why are we, why are we taking fifteen thousand dollars out of the budget again? We're trying to prove some pension penny, pennies about, get them into jobs and everything else, but we're going to spend fifteen thousand dollars for what? Convenience for somebody not to do their job? And I want to ask, this number D has been taken off. Will that be magically put back on at the end of the month? Will it be voted on without any discussion?
Item D on the food service management, Mr. Templeton, you're aware, we only received one bid. That bid's being reviewed, and that's why it's taken off, because the bid's not going to be reviewed yet.
But I was, I'm saying, it will not just all but appear at the end of the month, be voted on without any public comment?
It will, it will appear after it's finished being reviewed.
But there will be public comment prior to the vote.
There always is.
Ken?
I just want to answer Mr. Templeton's comment regarding the Pennsylvania economy and those studies. The reason why we reached out to those folks was, quite frankly, because there seemed to be a hue and cry from the public or certain sectors of the public that for whatever reason didn't trust the numbers that the administration was putting forth. And that was on all the social media that was out there, was evident in the commentary that was made at the finance committee meetings and at the board meetings. And so the board hasn't made any decisions yet whether they're going to hire this group to help or not. All we're trying to do now is get some information from a third party that does this every single day and find out what their methodologies are, how accurate are their models, and whether or not that's something that we should invest in. If we're going to be looking at closing a building or not closing a building, if we're going to be looking at realignment of our curriculum and right sizing our curriculum in a different format than it is now, fifteen thousand dollars may be a very small investment to make if it's going to put forth a plan for the school district that we're going to enact over a period of years. So, you know, I don't disagree with you. I'd rather not spend the money. But at the end of the day, I think what we're just trying to accomplish here is doing our due diligence and making sure that the board has options. And if the public feels that they want to see a different model or to verify the numbers that we have, perhaps we'll look to the public to give them that information as well. We're just, we're just looking for answers.
I'm still saying fifteen thousand dollars weighs too much, probably. And it's also put a cry out at the last, last meeting, five hundred votes on petition to save our cafeteria work. And that, that, that is another expense that you're trying to get rid of. So, you know, there's a lot of public outcry here.
Mrs. Hamon, I'm sorry, I don't want you to be the first, but I just handed a note saying that every time somebody comes to the podium, they need to restate their name and address.
Okay. Monica Hamon, five oh eight Monroe Street, Girdge Borough. My question too is also about contracts and negotiations and find out more. I know you said the staff reduction, I think, was eleven and due to retiring. Will we be replacing all of those teachers or just shuffling around teachers?
No, it's, it's, the proposal is to furlough eleven positions, three of which will be retirees.
Of three?
Yeah, the other eight were straight furloughed.
And the other thing, I don't know about anybody else, but I read the lawn ads, almost, you know, and I noticed on there that we had almost eight positions available for the sports teams. There are a list of all the coaches that are now, they're looking for coaches in the annual boom. And I'm just wondering, does any of that have to do with union contract or anything? Are we losing our, our sport head, you know? It just seemed kind of odd that we had so many, we, but I don't know if that was something contractual or not.
We can answer that.
No, I, I would say no, it's just regular turnover.
Regular turnover?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I was just curious, because it seemed like.
At least I don't believe that it has anything to do directly with contract negotiations.
Okay. And like, will we be able to post the contracts, the negotiation process online?
Yes, once, once we discuss it, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Steve Miller, six hundred Ridge Drive in. I have a couple of questions. I guess one is, you kept saying that to recommend the class sizes, you're really being recommended maximum class sizes, right? Not to exceed?
Yes.
So you're recommending that we compositions and increase our class sizes up to whatever the recommended maximum, twenty-six or where the higher levels are?
Whatever the recommended maximums are, yes.
Not to exceed maximums. Even though that may not be the best interest of children and the education. But how are we going to keep our revenue, our local revenue flat again for the fifth or sixth year, which really means that we're wanting to reduce our revenue because of the CPI, as we dissolved the contract, that's going to increase three percent of the dollars. Most of our contract expenses, so we're going to keep our local revenue flat, although it's declining. But we're going to continue to cut programs, continue not to have.
No, 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 excuse me. What programs are we cutting? I'm not aware of any.
Well, I'm sorry. Well, we're not going to reinstate programs, but we, we are, we're not cutting any today. We did cut kindergarten, we did different languages in middle school, we shortened encores in the bachelor years, none of those things have restored. So those cuts are still active. We're not cutting any today.
Right.
Some of those were, those cuts were made. Okay, just wanted to be clear on that. The other question I have is the modeling, the modeling piece, have we looked at higher education? I saw an interest in studying Portland State, the law of Oregon State of Washington, helping with modeling. One of the things I looked at is our core work modeling, what isn't very accurate, the size of school isn't good to the way it is. So they use five or six different modeling techniques, and it seemed like they do it for a lot less than the private. I thought the number was higher than fifteen thousand. And is that inaccurate?
We haven't, we haven't now even gotten a proposal yet from the Pennsylvania public committee. What we had was a estimate based on a, I had a twenty minute phone call that we shared with the board just to provide some additional information.
Okay. I said, heard a higher number that we're looking at.
There was no higher number ever mentioned.
Okay.
Well, the paper.
Well, the paper, the paper, I think, wrote a hundred and fifteen thousand, but the paper's not always accurate with their comments.
Okay. Just another option is higher education. We have some very fine institutions in the state that have certain tactics.
Okay. Is that it?
Maybe it's, or should we try, can we see that? The middle, or the high school positions that are potentially going to be cut. What positions are they? Music, correct?
I'm not sure, Mr. McKnight.
There's been no recommendation to cut anything in music, and there's actually in all my presentations at the curriculum committee, the recommendation is not to cut any.
So it was just mentioned that it was going to be two high school positions, one middle school position, and eight elementary positions. We don't know what those positions are?
There were, during the presentation to the curriculum committee, there were four options. Mr. Small.
I was hearing it. I thought it was a, a music program.
No, no music program. It was, it was a zero, under one option. We talked about the impact if you cut three, four academic teachers and what that would do. We talked about if there were three cuts from the encore programming, which music was not part of those. Art was put on that board, PE and actually science was not an encore, but also not acquired. So those were the three there. I'll defer to Mr. Small, which specifically, he may be, but that was the presentation that I made.
That's why I still haven't answered my question.
It's not music.
So what are they?
I have to determine it, is what I heard.
The recommendation I made was that, based on enrollment, and enrollment stopped applying to high school, zero. There were zero, that was my recommendation.
But there's two, there are two positions.
So I'm deferring to Mr. Small.
Okay.
Because I didn't make a recommendation.
No recommendation?
No recommendation, that was a result of Finance Committee simply two positions, high school, it was not specified.
So in one week's time, they'll be voting on positions, but we don't even know maybe what they are?
We're not voting, we're not voting on any positions.
But it's a whole other budget that we're drafting?
It's a whole other budget. What we're voting on at the end of the day, at the end of June, is the final budget, and that's when the position will be determined. It's the same process we've been through every year.
So, so you're making claims that you're not cutting programs, but you could be cutting programs, because you don't even know what could potentially be cut. Like, it's not making sense to me right now. Incidentally, I'm glad that you brought up gym, because in these classes that you haven't cut, I say in quotation marks, you realize that there are kids at the high school now, the gym classes are too large. And while half the class or three quarters of the class participates in gym class, the remainder of the kids that can't participate just walked a track. Mr. Wolf, I appreciate your comments earlier about saying that perception becomes reality. I don't know if any of you followed in the newspaper the other day, it was an article about Exeter School District. And in Exeter School District, they've been, their board has been getting some public pressure regarding a plus team vote. And one of the parents stood up at that meeting and said they were concerned about that expense because they didn't want Exeter to turn into another Daniel Boone School District that just cuts and cuts and cuts. And while public perception is very important, you have to see how your decisions are impacting the public perception, not just here, but elsewhere. So when you say you don't cut, let's look at reality.
Well, I think the reality, Miss Hicks, is that salaries and benefits have not been cut in the school district. They've gone up and up and up every single year. Every single year, every single year, every single year, salaries and benefits have gone up and up and up. They used to take sixty percent of our budget, they now take sixty-seven percent of our budget. It's squeezing out all the other things that we have available. So the school district is constantly balancing the constraints of the money it has versus the expense it has to pay. As a result of that, we're always looking for options that are available to us to continue to deliver the best education we can within the constraints of the finances that we have. That's the way it goes. If people don't want to see salaries and benefits go up, that puts a lot of relief on other programs. But that's not the way our system's structured. So every year, as salaries and benefits increase by six to eight percent a year, we have to figure out where the six to eight percent of the budget has to go to cover those increases. Mr. Bezos, will your mic go on?
Yes.
Attorney Secretary, first, Thomas?
No.
Intermediary report?
Since we changed the schedule, I haven't had a bid since, I'll ask.
I was counting on that. Career, Burke's career in technology, you reported?
I don't think I've been so long since we, since my last report.
Let's just... Changed the schedule.
Okay, yeah, I don't, that's right, yeah.
Thank you. Legislative report, I'll just tell you that there are several bills in Harrisburg floating around that impact the school district. One, there are competing property tax relief bills, both from the Governor, from the Senate, and from the House, none of which will probably get passed, but, and there's even more than one bill in the House competing against each other. So that's your property tax relief. There's a bill proposed in the Senate to change the furloughing of teachers according to evaluation as opposed to seniority. Don't know how that will go either. There's a bill in the Senate to change the current pension plan, which impacts current employees, which if it's passed, will probably result in lawsuits, and that's probably not going to pass either, because it not only impacts teachers, it impacts the legislators themselves. And the fourth thing going on in Harrisburg is the budget, which as Mr. Small mentioned earlier, is required by law to be finished by June thirtieth. The anticipation is that it might get done this year by December. And if that's the case, we will have to live on our fund balance from June thirtieth until December. So that's the legislative report.
Mr. Martino, did we mistakenly skip the student government report?
That, that report will be next week. Yes, next week.
I thought we were moving each, the report out, so that the voting meeting to the committee and the whole?
Yeah, that's the student government, the next item is the student board representative. Which, my mistake, which is next week. We'll get it for you down there in ten.
Thanks. I just have to wait for my mic. At the high school, there's a lot going on because it's May and it's high school. There's twenty-three days left, we all know it, don't worry. Fan concert is tomorrow night, I encourage you all to go. And if you can't make it, we have a chorus concert on Wednesday and art, like, showcase on Wednesday. Each of the students that are in the art classes basically have their own wall, just their artwork, it's paintings, it's murals, it's beautiful. And they're also painting, the one hallway down by the nurse's office in the NX, and there's this beautiful peach mural. So if you ever are in the NX at the high school, it's gorgeous, you should definitely look at it. Prom was this past Friday, it was a blast, and so thank you to all the chat rooms and you guys are here. AP's end this week, that is wonderful. Softball, we have a game tomorrow, and baseball was tonight, which Ms. Torsha mentioned. We have five people going to districts from track, which is also awesome. Relay is this Saturday, so I encourage the public, the Board, everybody to definitely go out, at least for like an hour, and just see what relay for like is, it's amazing. We have class officer, class officer election, so that's always fun. We had Special Olympics two weeks ago, I think it was, I don't know if any of you guys got to come down and see it, but that was wonderful as well. I know Josh's mom was there, so I'm sure she'll speak us all, but it was beautiful. We had Jamie, who passed away in Exeter, we did a dollar fundraiser, basically we encouraged every person in the, I think it was just in the high school, to bring in a dollar, basically saying you could earn like twelve hundred dollars if everybody just brought in a dollar, and so that was really cool. And we also have Bunny Ball going on till, I think, June, and there's a ton of kids from all over the district, excuse me, but especially at the high school that helped out with that, so check that out if you're not busy on the Sunday.
Thank you, Ms. Sweetie. Any comments or questions for Ms. Sweetie?
I'd like to add a comment about the prom, to which I went with my escort, Mr. Kurtz. And it was my first prom ever, for the record.
I'm glad it was memorable.
Thank you. You looked dapper that evening. As did all of our students, I thought it was a first-class event, and I think our kids responded appropriately. Mr. McKnight was very proud of them, and I can't tell you how, I felt the same way. They danced nice, they spoke nice, they weren't carrying cameras and doing weird things with cameras, they were very sophisticated acting, and I'm just, I can't tell you how impressed I am with our, our kids at that prom. I understand the food was age-appropriate, I missed the food, but it had, they had things that the kids liked, and I got really good reviews from the few of the kids that I knew that I had, so I thank you so much from the bottom of my heart, Mrs. Hauck and everyone else who coordinated that, and I was just happy with that, thank you.
Mrs. Bite, you may not be aware, but I had an email from Mrs. Hauck and asked her to set up the spotlight to answer you and Mr. Kurtz, she didn't get the email on time.
Well, there was no disco ball anyway, except the invitation.
It had to decline because I couldn't think of anything more horrible than my, my parents showing up to my senior prom, so I wasn't going to wind up at the daddy doghouse for a month for showing up at my daughter's prom, so I decided to not go.
Any public comment on the Board member presentations? Seeing them move on to personnel and policy, is any Board member comments or questions about any of the personnel items? There was one?
One question I had seemed just a little unusual, that there is a motion, approved following leaves of, you know, classified kind of a bear, then on the reverse page, she resigns dead. That's a sample.
It must have come out.
Is that with this?
No, it was from the twenty-fourth, she resigned. She took off time before she resigned.
Can I ask your...
Yes, thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I had a question about the resignation, would that position be replaced or not included in all the cuts? We would need to replace them.
The special... Yes, they need to be replaced.
Any public comment on personnel? Programs, Mrs. Torsha, do you want to give the enrollment report and student data report?
Oh, they're attached. I don't really have a report to give.
I haven't, you don't want to. Do you have it?
Yep, I have it. Enrollment, right now, as of April fifteenth, was three thousand, five hundred and eight students overall. This time last year was, yep, one hundred less, one hundred more, I'm sorry. And with regards to our, there's not much change with regards to our out of district placements or, you know, our school transportation. So not much has really changed, other than declining enrollment from last year to this year.
Does this sound right to you, Ms. Torsha, the River Rock enrollment back in August was nine Daniel Boone students, with twenty-three enrolled, and now it's sixteen and forty-eight enrolled?
That does sound right, yes.
So the River Rock has been very successful in getting enrollment here and enrolling students from all the different school districts, so it's been a success?
Yes.
Because I think, my recollection was when we were first negotiating the lease, getting up to forty-six students was going to be hitting it out of the park. And so they're at forty-eight now.
They're thrilled, they have gotten a big reception from the area school districts. Everyone is very happy with their program, and they're thrilled, too. They don't really want to grow that much larger because they don't want to lose sight of what they're doing for kids, so...
Correct. Okay, thank you, I just wanted to bring that attention to the Board and the public that...
On that issue there, we're giving five replacements, right, given that there's sixteen Daniel Boone students there?
Whatever the math was, I believe it was, what, for every seven stu...
Twenty-nine, up to twenty-nine, and then one for each eight thereafter.
Correct.
So it would be five at forty-five.
I would have to agree with you that they have been following exactly the way that the contract is.
How do we monitor that as a business department? Who is actually pulling up on that? We should have five replacements. Good, and then one other quick question, what's the high school dropout rate this year, please?
I don't have that pressed, do you know the...
We were at seventeen, ten, eleven, twelve, at the last round of that count, so we're running around with three or four students, great.
I thought seventeen was the thirteen, fourteen number, I did see that on the PD US, I was wondering if it's a fourteen, fifteen dropout rate.
We'll have a fourteen, fifty number for it done, but at this current point, the number probably...
We wouldn't have a year-to-date enrollment?
We do, and if it ends around seven, I'll double check and maybe get back.
Thank you.
I just, I actually just wanted to know, also, the River Rock, at sixteen students that are not paying for transportation to go to another location, so the savings is considerable for the school district. And the last time I paid them under programs, we'll be voting to accept a five hundred dollar donation to BEC from the Burke's Community Action Program, and one that's approved, and I'll say it now, how much we appreciate that donation. Any public comment on programs? Seeing not move on to policy, Mr. Wolf?
Mr. Martino, we actually had two meetings since we last met. We met on April twenty-eighth, which was a busy work session because we forwarded quite a few policies. One was a consolidated district conflict of interest policy, that was, we sent that to legal review, we just found out today, Mr. Torsha came back and said it's ready for the full Board review, first reading, then we'll see you next week. Another important project was the child abuse. PSBA rewrote our policy, basically our policy that we had is two paragraphs, it is what it is, it's pretty old, so it was way overdue for review. That, too, went to Fox Rothschild to be reviewed, and that will also be on next week's agenda. The most important thing is the suicide prevention awareness, suicide awareness and prevention. Act seventy-one was passed last year, this year, the school district must be compliant with that. There is a training component to that, Mrs. Torsha may be aware of, I think that's something that she scheduled for the teachers and somehow works out.
Yes, Mr. Hurley will be working on getting that scheduled so that we're in compliance with that for the start of the school year.
Thank you. That also was written by PSBA, and it arrived for us. Due to the importance of it, this must be enacted before the beginning of the school year, so that was a very special piece of business. We didn't feel as a committee that we had much to say about it, we figured we'd let it go through for legal review. That, too, has come back for legal review, and that will be on the agenda for next week as well. I do, Mrs. Torsha did give me a PowerPoint on the Act seventy-one and the components with that, I felt it was pretty, it's pretty important, actually, it's one of our most important policies, next to bullying and some of the other things, because certainly, you know, the people that work with the students closer, including the students themselves, have a mechanism to report, you know, their concerns and have that acted upon. So the people, teachers mostly, and those that interact with the students the most, administrators, of course, this will be very important to put forward, so that's, it's the law, so we had to comply with it, I think it's great, now we have a policy that reflects what the law actually requires us to do. Our next meeting?
May twenty...
My favorite, and our next meeting is actually, we just decided today to meet again on the twenty-eighth here at six o'clock, and then we will have our next meeting at the committee and the whole of June, as our regular scheduled meetings. We also, I almost forgot, we also discussed fundraising, Mrs. Bite's had some concerns about that, and we had Mrs. Reno here from the sports, sports side, and answered a lot of questions. I think some of our concerns, and Mrs. Bite, I don't want to take all your thunder, because I'm sure you're going to hit the lights soon, is that there, at the, there's a lot of fundraising that's going on in the district, and the feeling is, a lot of the fundraising is to pay for things that, quite frankly, you know, should the district be paying for, such as baseballs, the starter, the starter gun rounds, is that something that the track team should be fundraising to pay for that sort of thing? So, so this is some of the questions I want to talk to Mr. Bezos about it. What we would like to do is, and what we decided as a committee, is to wait until after the submission of all the teams' budgets come August, and then review, see what, see what they're actually paying for, then ask the next question of why, why would they be paying for that? Is that something that the district should be paying for, or if that's something appropriate that the activity should be paying for? So we're not making many conclusions, we're just going to take that data, look at it, and then bring it forward. As far as the policy, we, as far as finance, that's something we would ask the Finance Committee to look forward in the next year's budget. I conclude my report, is there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Board comments your question? Mrs. Bite?
I think you summed it up quite nicely.
Thank you. Any public comment, any public comment on policy? Seeing, now, let me just back up a minute, Mr. McKnight, in regard to Mrs. Hicks' question, now I don't know which two positions she was, is being, is being referred to in our budget, but you found thirty-four classes, if I remember, with less than ten students?
That's correct.
I think that amounts to at least two teaching positions somewhere along the line, so, you know, I think that at least justifies the number of two. Moving on to transportation.
Enrollment numbers, too, the fact that enrollments went...
Well, no, enrollment in the high school has not declined yet.
No, I mean, in the district at large, though.
No, it's two positions in the high school.
I agree, okay.
Mr. Bezos, am I late? Bus run transportation?
Yes, my schedule did not allow me to set something up for the early part of this month to get that done, so we're going to try to coordinate that with the finance committee and get that all done in one shot.
Okay. Is there any other business?
I noticed absence from our agenda is the summer band program. I guess my question is, where is it? Did we come to any agreement, those two? Is it, I mean, I agree, it should either be a sanctioned district function, a class, or it should be separated and then run as a club, to allow the teachers to do this themselves. I'm just wondering what happened to it, because I thought the discussion was going to be... You know, and I know, from what I heard, it was a, it's a positive. We're in the black with this program, the district's making money. So, I'm not that-
This year's summer special fund is?
All right, special fund is... So, my question is, what happened to it?
Well, is there other discussion on that? I mean, the voting meeting is next week, if we want to vote on it, but is there more discussion? The questions that I remember are that if we contracted out and make it an independent program, then what they charge and how much they make and all that is on whoever runs the program. If we keep it, then we need to determine what the costs and everything are. And should we not be making money on it? And as Mr. Nowsky just said, there's money made, but it doesn't come to us. So, I think that needs to be discussed and finalized. I agree with you, it's sort of got shoved aside, but it's May, and I think we need to make a decision on it soon. I don't know what else discussion there is, though.
I would say that I think we should contract it and have it bid for access, or at least solicit fees. Maybe we'll only get one, and maybe we'll get more, open it up to people who may be interested.
I think you might be a little late for that.
I was going to say, I mean, there's got to be a timeline here, in terms of when they get, they have advertisements program, put it out there, and start collecting fees, and people will need to schedule their summers around this thing. So, you know, obviously, we need to make a decision at the voting meeting on it, for sure. I don't think you can go out, I mean, that might be an idea for next year. I'm not sure, logistically, how feasible that is, to go out and solicit music instructors to provide pricing for, I mean, I just don't know. Do you have a comment?
I thought of this as we were sitting here, perhaps we can go through Blazer Foundation, and they could potentially run it as a fundraiser. And because I know that that was something that Stephanie has talked about, and trying to do different types of programs throughout the summer, that would draw our students in, give parents a place to have their students, you know, go for a few days or a week, and then potentially maybe draw up some revenue for the Blazer Foundation, so they could decide what type of a fee structure that they would like to set up, and how they would like to reimburse those that provided the instruction. So, perhaps we can explore that with the Blazer Foundation.
Well, I'd like to thank Mr. Wolf for reminding us, because this was discussed a month and a half ago, and we've stopped, and we actually have at least three proposals now. One is to keep status quo, one is to go out for bids, one is to use the Blazer Foundation. And Mr. McKnight, in his presentation a couple of months ago, talked about running summer programs.
Yeah, I realize, but I don't want to throw that into the next two, because status quo, I know Mr. McKnight, I think that's one of his agenda for next summer, is to have a whole gag, perhaps a program to raise money for the district, so that could be part of-
Yeah, I think what Mr. Bezos suggested, I mean, we'll vote on it next week, but it's probably for this year, we're probably going to have to leave it as it is, probably. And moving forward to next year, look at these other ideas of what can be done and what will be done.
I just have an idea, with the Blazer Foundation idea going off of that, if you do go to the Blazer Foundation, or perhaps even current Derrywood High School students who are proficient at their experiments, and recent Derrywood graduates could apply this in that case, maybe they can earn a little bit of money over the summer, and you have, again, that continued connection to the school district. Just a thought, I really like that idea.
Any other thoughts? Are you going to get to that with the-
Our student center has lost Stephanie, and that's something that we'll all-
Sure.
All right, I think it's on there. Mr. Curtis, I know right now, we do have programs where, like, the high school kids go down and teach during the summer, and they bring grads, and all volunteer right now, just to, like, turn a better profit and all, but that's definitely a good idea.
Well, volunteer for you guys, but some people are getting paid, and you could go to pursue it, just a thought.
Okay, is there any public comment on the summer band program?
Because my kids have been in the summer band program.
No, it's not on.
Now, it is. Now, it's top suite, 1856 Old Sweet Road. To send it out somewhere else, I don't like that idea as a pack, because I know a lot of the things, when my littlest one went into sixth grade last year, the neat thing for her is, you know, you got NEC, BECAIC, it got with the school district instructors, and they got together for the first time, and it's their band, it's going to be the sixth grade band. If you put the other ones out there, they're not going to have the same instructors, not going to have the school instructors, you know, it was one that you build rapport with the kids that don't get to see the other kids at the other schools. That's all.
Thank you. Sergio, sign it, and we'll talk. Moving on to new business, item A, it'll be time to elect a board treasurer, so the board members consider who you'd like to nominate, or nominating yourselves, next week, and we'll vote on that. The other items are, yes, you have 10 percent. The other item is approve a three-year agreement with Lightspeed Systems for the web content- Content filtering solution, at a cost of $7,670. And two other items, one is a meeting greet discussion by Mrs. Byts.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Martino. Yes, I'm proposing that, in an effort to foster better public participation than what we're restricted to in this format, that maybe some of the board members, if not all the board members, could agree to meeting, maybe like 6:30, an hour before a voting meeting, because they're the shorter meetings, and just make themselves, make ourselves available to the public to ask us, direct any comments, questions, suggestions at us, not restricted to, you know, the agenda items that they can comment on now. I would, we can make it more, less formal, and they could use a podium or not use a podium, we can mill around, we can maybe offer some coffee and patries, and make it, you know, palpable. And us take notes on what our constituents are saying for change, and for us to be, you know, attentive to what their concerns are. Now, there would be some rules, I would suggest, that if you couldn't get personal, it would be, you know, big picture items, and that any problem that they identified, I would kind of ask them to also have a solution to suggest. So, that's all I'm thinking of, like, a meet and greet, maybe June, after the June meeting, for an out for the board members who kind of get here an hour early, just make themselves available, set up a little, you know, reception, maybe meet and greet the board, your school board members.
I think the only question I would have to be from Mr. Subers, I don't think it's a bad idea, I think it's a good idea. My only question is, if that's more like a town hall forum, would we need to keep minutes, because we officially have a forum? And how do you keep minutes in those types of discussions, if you have multiple one-on-ones going on at the same time? Maybe there's no need for it, I don't know. If we can just ask him next week, when he's here.
Or we can reduce it to four members.
Well, you typically have some type of committee meeting happening before.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, we can utilize a committee meeting before our voting, and I'd recommend the whole to make the meeting nice, a little more friendly for us, so that's one concern. But maybe something quarterly, is that a monthly?
Oh, yeah, I wouldn't suggest quarterly, I was suggesting annually.
Annual, oh, okay, all right.
I was just suggesting one in June.
Okay. Maybe something you could even do is, if I would have, area teacher conferences, one of the buildings, parents already in the district, they teach school stuff, have a room where there's the board members, if they want to come and chat, and offer ideas and solutions.
Mr. Mads, sometime, not tonight, but sometime soon, could you check Mr. Rathead's mic? It keeps cutting out, it could be the battery, it could be the mic.
Could he be the operator?
Use of error. Thank you. Mr. Bezos, Gary Road?
Yes, this actually came up right after our last meeting. The board supervisors in Union Township approached me and asked if I could bring this up with the board, and perhaps with our building principal at the high school. A lot of the residents along Gary Road have been complaining to the board supervisor in Union Township about vehicles that are speeding both to the school first thing in the morning, people are running late, and then at the end of school, tearing out of there and racing down Gary Road. The supervisors have installed a stop sign, that hasn't worked, they tend to just blow through the stop sign, and apparently, it's happening at very high rates of speed, you know, 65, 75, 80 miles an hour, up and down that road. It's a, you know, it's a really, it's a residential road, it's on a hill, it's not the most safe road to use. So, it applies both to students and parents, apparently. Yeah, many of the ends are running up there pretty quickly, too, it's not just the kids and their cars. So, I don't know whether there's something, you know, a morning discussion with seniors and juniors about driving responsibly, and, you know, being good neighbors, and that sort of thing, maybe something the students can take care of as well, with their peers. You may carry more weight than an adult lecturing students about the safety of driving, but it's something that the supervisors felt very strongly about, and they wanted some assistance, whatever assistance we could provide.
We can, you know, we do have MG, and they, in the morning and after school, they're doing some batting, right in front of the school. I think that, I had a look at the time, they actually, we might have to check with MG, having someone down at that end, we can only control, obviously, our campus, what goes up and down there, you know, would be state police, probably, I guess.
Yeah.
Would we coordinate, have a conversation with the state police, and maybe be a little more vigilant there? I know that one of the provisional calls I had received is that they wanted that area closed, and I think that if we were to consider closing that end, we should certainly do the batting, because what we do on 3:45, 4:00, 7:00, 4:00, and there are a lot of young kids living in those parts. So, I think before we consider closing, we could definitely take a, maybe a study to that situation, but I can do a piece of that, for sure.
I think, I mean, I think you just underscored their concern, I mean, it's gotten to the point where they're literally saying, someone's going to get hurt on this road, and so we want to, we're thinking about closing, if they don't want to go that step. So, I don't know, I guess they were thinking some sort of morning conference, you know, grab the juniors and seniors and kind of bring them in, say, hey, look, guys, you know, this is serious, you gotta slow down here, you know, and maybe just that conversation with the kids and with the parents, I don't know if there's a newsletter that goes out or something else, that goes to the parents, too, to say, hey, look, you guys have to slow down around here.
We can do a public information campaign, for sure, and we'll do that. I think they tend to have a short life. I think having, like I said, MG entrance down there will help also, so I think all of the things should be done.
Yeah, I don't think the first talk should be a threat, but I think, I think if someone gets caught speeding after your talk, they should lose their parking privileges. Mr. Curtis, you said you had some new business?
Yes.
Oh, two questions? Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, Mr. McKnight has done a great job in the front, putting the MG guys there, and I think if you put them in the back as well, it would definitely clean it up, because I always take the front entrance out of school, and it was a mess until the security guards got more heavy there, and now it's a lot calmer, a lot smoother, a lot less bad stuff's happening. Even just to have one guy down there who just, like, parks his truck, and is there for seniors and juniors to see who are speeding, it would clean it up so much.
Thank you.
All right, here, I'm just, you know, I'm a big proponent of, you know, cooperation between the, I don't think we do enough between the district and our municipalities, so, you know, if we could, Mr. McKnight can do something else, I think that's great. I did have one question, as someone had mentioned, and got out how you get stories from the past, and they're not necessarily, but did you ever contract with Birdsboro for police services?
As far as I know, the state police still covers Union Township.
Okay, so someone admitted that Birdsboro at one time?
No, what they did do is, in terms of, they did coordinate their fire departments. So, the fire departments had to consolidate between Union Township and Birdsboro.
Yeah, that might be something that the union supervisors could look at, but maybe contract the state police for a certain period, I'm sure money talks, right? So, maybe the state police could decontract a couple hours a year randomly to come down there and enforce the limit, which I think would, if you know that someone is going to be there, I think that would be a good deterrent as well.
Yeah, let's see, I think, I don't think the state police really wants to put themselves as being in a position of traffic cops, they've got a lot of other things on their hands.
Pay them, they might-
Yeah, obviously, we had an opportunity to ask the gentleman why he's here, but I'll make that suggestion and see what they do. Thank you.
Mr. Rathgab, I have been in touch with the state police when this first came up in around December, and I had been working directly with Union Township, and that was how it was decided that they would put up the stop sign. So, there's been efforts going on back and forth, it's just, it's that daily presence on that road that is what's missing. And the state police, I do believe, came out a couple of times, however often, I can't give you an exact number, but they're very aware as well, because I was calling everybody, including Birdsboro, to see if they couldn't handle, you know, the lower end of it, and so, but I think that, you know, Mr. McKnight's suggestion may help to deter.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes, I just wanted to recognize supervisors, Gohe and Weller, for attendance tonight from Amity Township. It's very nice to see you, the two of us, if you like Amity Township meetings, it's nice to, it's great to have you attend, it's yours, thank you.
Any public comment on the new business, or any issue?
Very helpful, with one of my four jobs I have, positions I have at Union Township is co-chairman of the fire watch. What times are you needing the state police there?
I, my understanding is that, my understanding is that the students are coming through sometime between 7:00 and 7:30, so I think roughly that half hour, you know, before school, and probably more activity is closer to the 7:30 end, where the speeding is taking place. And then, at the end of the day, there's been different reports that have been given to us, that kids are actually racing each other out of the, they're, you know, out of the lot, so I would say, what, 2:20, 2:25, to like 2:45, perhaps? Thank you.
So, flow is the best. One or two, one or two, take it, stop. Any public comment? Now, push the button once, and it's on.
My name is Richard Gohe, I'm a resident of Amity Township, 1 Talaro Drive. I'm also supervisor in the township, and I thank you, Mr. Curtis, for, thank you, honestly. I want to start by just making this comment, I'm impressed how you all interact with each other. It is, did I take a strange night, or do you know how to do it this way? You all, the staff, the board, you all seem to work very well together, so congratulations.
Thank you. Mr. Gohe, it took a while, but the boards aren't having to disagree with each other. It took a while, Miss.
We can probably do that, too.
Well, to start with, I want to thank the board for two-
Well, to start with, I want to thank the board for two things. One, providing a quality education for our kids, we all know that's the most important thing. But secondly, providing that education without raising your taxes. You've done that now for three years, and I want to thank you for that. It's very important for several reasons. I know how difficult, being a township supervisor, I know how difficult it is to provide quality services without raising taxes. We managed in Amity Township to do that for several years ourselves. It's a challenge. Amity Township is also very proactive in bringing in new business. We all know what that means, that's attached is. And it's a challenge to do that, and you know, one of the very first things they ask us, the developer, when they come into our township, they ask us what our local property taxes are. So it is extremely important to hold down the cost of business of tax from a tax standpoint. And I just want to thank you all for doing it.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Is there a motion to a German?
Salute.